Good evening, everyone. We'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. Councilor Hannah, can you verify we have a quorum, sir?
We do have a quorum, yes, sir.
All right. And the record will show. Dr. Proctor, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
All right. Dr. Proctor is with us virtually. Council, you have an agenda before you that was previously distributed. I would ask for one amendment to the agenda. That is to add Mayor's comments below City Manager Office update. And the subject of that is parks.
Sooner.
Have a motion, I'd say.
Second.
Any discussion, council? All in favor?
Aye.
Close, sir? Thank you, council. Next out of the planning commission update is Burgess.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. We have two -- I'm trying not to get my big head in Dr. Proctor's way. We have two applications for Tuesday. They are both variance requests. One is for assigned variance over across the way in Cherokee closeouts for J.C. Market. And we also have several variances, variance requests from Cradle, running from the percentage of metal to be used to fenestration. And, let's see. Yep. Mostly just that it is just has to do with building facade and the building materials. They're asking for four variances from materials and facade requirements. We are recommending denial as they do not meet -- both applications do not meet the criteria.
Anything further? Burgess?
No.
GMC presentation, Mr. Will. Welcome, sir.
So I believe everyone knows Corky, Callan Cowman from GMC. They are our consultants that are working on the utility master plan, that are working on three of our four GFA projects. You may recall that in March and again in May of last year, I brought the loans for the GFA projects before council or approval. And since that time, they have been working on developing the plans, developing scopes of work. And tonight, we have asked them to come forward and kind of give an update on where they stand with those three projects and that they are designing for the city. So Corky, take it away.
I don't want to let Call do the presentation tonight, but I'm here for moral support.
Excellent. Well, just tell me.
And I'll have some input into it as well.
All right. Yeah. Thank you, Kim. Like you said, my name's Callan, I'm a GMC project engineer. We're just going to run through a few updates on some projects, the projects that Kim was referencing, and then kind of go in more detail about the sewer system rehab project. So, excellent.
Okay.
Since the water wastewater master plan, so if you recall, we came up in February, presented it at the February work session. Really, all that we have, all that we're working on right now is updating population projections based on the latest available data. And then going through and refining the sewer model as we collect more and more data about the City of Jasper collection system.
I want to add something to that. As we're doing the sewer televising under this rehab project that we're going to talk about here in a few minutes, we will find additional manholes in there when we're doing that televising. We will add those to the model as we find those because we're requiring that the contractor do a location of those that he finds that we have not found. The other thing is, I spoke with our city planner yesterday regarding the population projections and his work on that, and he should have that finished probably next week. So we'll add that and modify the report there. That's all I got on that, though.
All right. So the water distribution system rehab project, we've broken up into two kind of separate projects, but both falling under the same funding. So this project is the Upper Bethany Road connection to Cherokee County. This is a supply project. So this will be about 3,800 feet of six-inch PVC that will connect to the Cherokee water system, Cherokee County water system. Currently, the City of Jasper is contracted with Cherokee Water to pull 184 gallons per minute. But the current infrastructure that's in place doesn't allow the city to get that full 184. So that's the purpose of this project. So right now, we've created, completed preliminary plans for this, and we're in the process of fire flow testing hydrants in the area and pressure monitoring of hydrants in the area to finalize the design.
This is the 30% plan you gave me today. Is that correct? Or is it alignment?
That's Fox Run.
Okay, gotcha.
That's Fox Run, which is our next.
Okay.
So Fox Run is a neighborhood that currently is served by a four-inch water line that the city has struggled with for several years now. It's just had a lot of issues, a lot of patch repairs, leaks, that sort of thing. So this project would give fire protection to the area and then install a new six-inch pipeline down that Fox Run lane. And those plans are at 30%. And I just dropped those off today to Kim for city review and comment.
Along that line, I think there are fire hydrants out there now on that four-inch, but this is not quite the correct term. I'm going to say legally, you can't have a fire hydrant on a four-inch. You should not have a fire hydrant on a four-inch line. The six-inch will at least provide a better water flow down through there, as well as a dependable water main that the city doesn't have to go out.
At the time that that main was constructed, four-inch was very likely the industry standard, though, at that time. You know, as we progress and they decide new regulations, that number increases continually. This is one of the projects, though, we went ahead and had them do the design for. We plan to bid these projects out as bid alternates to where they can bid this, bid that one as well. If we can afford to do both projects underneath that scope, then we certainly will do so. That is our intent. If we had to pick one over the other, though, the supply project is the one to go with.
There's one other component to this water distribution system rehab is zone valving and SCADA. And what we're trying to accomplish there is to allow you to control your water system much better than what you do now. You really are very limited. Everything now is manual control. And what we will try to do is put SCADA on your tanks and SCADA on the valves and the pump stations to control those valves based on the pump elevation, excuse me, the tank elevations. When the tank calls for water, the valve will open automatically based on set points that we put in, and pumps will come on to fill those tanks. So that's a part of this component. Kim just mentioned it's a very tight budget, and in all likelihood, we cannot get the three components, meaning Fox Run and the pump station with Cherokee and the SCADA put in. But we, you have a lump sum contract for our fees, and we designed it. So when and if you have the money to do it, you'll have a design to put it in there. And the SCADA is very important to you to be able to control your system out there. That's what we hope to be able to accomplish.
New master lift station. So this project, the purpose is to eliminate the current Mineral Springs Lift Station and replace the Town Creek Lift Station with where we're going to combine that sewer flow down to this new master lift station. Kim, if you could go to the next slide. Just because it's a graphic show.
I apologize.
No. So you can see, we're collecting the flow at the north triangle is Mineral Springs Pump Station. We're going to collect that flow and flow down Mineral Springs Road to our new proposed lift station. And then take all the flow from both those pump stations up through a force main, all the way over to a receiving manhole that drains directly to the wastewater treatment plant. So that's the scope of this project. And the real purpose is to eliminate, you're eliminating a lift station that has had some, recently had some issues.
Kim, I want to point out something here. We are, as Call said, this is a new lift station. Can everybody see it? I'm not getting it away.
They've got their.
We're pumping up to here. From here, we're continuing to pump all the way over to here. And we are, I'm very concerned, and I have to be right, when I designed this lift station as far as the size of my piping in here. I know what I'm putting here, but I don't know what's in here. There's a possibility that we may be able to keep this existing force main, depending on what size it is. And I've got some conflicting information over here. I've asked Charles if maybe we can come out here, we can pothole here, or apparently it changes size somewhere in here, and we don't know exactly where. So that's the reason it's not showing a force main all the way over here. We have had it surveyed, and we may have to put a force main all the way over here, but possibly not. So to be determined.
And that's the portion of the project that is the capacity enhancing portion of the project. So not only are you eliminating two stations that are not functioning correctly, they are very old, they do need to be, excuse me, decommissioned, but you're also planning for the future as well. So not only can that station handle what is coming to it, it would be able to handle flows in the future as demand increases.
We really need to, this is, that force main size is a half a million dollar answer. So I mean, we really need to make sure, I don't want to put it in unless we just absolutely have to. If we have to, we will, but it's a big expense to the city if we have to put it in there. But we'll, you know, we'll determine that before we put that 100% final design. We had it surveyed all the way, and we've got plans for most of it already, but to be determined what exactly we'll do with that section.
All right. And then, so we're here to talk in more detail about this project, sanitary sewer rehab. And it focuses on Priority Zone 1, which is the purple zone. And so today, we've dropped off 100% plans for bid. And just kind of want to walk through our plan of action here. First step is to get a contractor to clean and televise the existing sewer in that Priority Zone 1. That contractor will then send us the footage. We will review the footage and then establish a list of priority rehab and repairs to be made, using a few different methods. Kim, if you could go to the next one. So one of those methods is cured and placed pipe, or CIPP. This is a trenchless rehab. You're not digging up, you're not disturbing the earth, you're not excavating. You're basically slipping a liner through the pipes, and then that liner is hardened against the pipes, and it, you know, improves the structural integrity of the pipes, as well as stopping leaks and inflow infiltration issues, and it's cost effective. So that's kind of what CIPP is. When you can't use CIPP, you use a more traditional, traditional replacement or point repair, which is excavation, disturb the earth, pulling up pipes, repairing them in place if that is possible, or fully removing them, and replacing them with new pipe.
Sometimes all the way between manholes.
And then manhole rehab, spray applied liner. This is protective coating that goes on the inside of the manholes, and it stops inflow infiltration, same issues, seals cracks, and enhances structural integrity and just expands the lifespan of the manhole. So also included in this project as a bid alternate is a SCADA system for the existing lift stations and then master lift station when it's installed. This just allows the city, sends the city alerts whenever there's high water levels, if a pump fails, and it allows for the remote control of pumps. So it just gives the city a lot of control over their system. It allows them to, you know, if you're on the other side of the town and you see one's backing up, you can run the pump and get over there before it starts overflowing.
The big benefit to this is just what Call described. If you're having a problem in your system, and if it happens in the middle of the night or you have a storm and power goes out, the lift station's continuing to fill, it'll reach a point and it sounds the alarm. It may not be a sound alarm, but it might be a light alarm. But it will also send a signal via telephone to Josh or Charles or 911, whoever you so choose. And it tells these, you know, your representatives that something's wrong in this location. And it may be that they try to start the pump again. Or it may be that they try to start it and it still does not start. So they have to continue out to the lift station and do whatever is necessary out there.
So this is something that in the future, as development does resume, and we may get additional lift stations that the city has to publicly maintain and be responsible for. These are the type things that we would include in our specifications then, to where a new lift station comes with the mission SCADA. It comes with the generators. That's something that we've done in the past. Or maybe an emergency bypass pump, whichever we feel is more appropriate at that location.
All right. And then with that, we just wanted to open up for any questions you may have.
Counselor? With the CIPP, how long does that typically last in pipes? Is there a timeframe on there?
I haven't seen one fail yet. Now, they haven't been doing this that long. I mean, I could be at a project probably in, I want to say 95. So it's been in place 30 years. But it's just like putting in a new pipe, essentially. I mean, it's not quite as you don't have the wall thickness of a new pipe, but it is, it's a strong product and certainly takes care of a lot of problems. The one thing that it does repair, and I harp on this with clients all the time, is service lines. I mean, we do, it will go past a service line, they'll send a piece of equipment back in there and it'll cut the hole for the service line, but it doesn't do anything on the other end of that service line. And that is a, that is a big problem that we'll, you know, we're not really addressing in this, in this project. Even though we may find some, we will note them and, you know, we can either get our contractor to repair them, or we can, you know, at least note them for the city to go back out and make repairs to them. But to answer your question, along, you know, a 20-year life would be a short expense. I really would expect them to last 30 to 40 years.
It's made of fiberglass, and then you pump in either air, like steam, or water to get it, to stick to that diameter of the pipe. And then you go back and you cure it with a UV light, and it cures to the outer, to the inner diameter of the pipe. Four, six, two, doesn't matter.
Six and up, maybe four, but six up to, up to big. You know, 24 wouldn't be unexpected.
Counselor? Any further questions or staff comments?
Yeah, I've got one more, if that's all right. You were talking about how, you know, we have your services for the drawings, so even if we go out to bid and we can't do all three of the projects, is there a timeframe that that's good for, these drawings? Are they good for evermore?
As long as you keep them.
Yeah, okay, perfect. I didn't know if they expired in five years or what.
If you call somebody else in this company 15 years from now, they should provide you with that set of drawings.
So the one thing that we may have no control over, though, is another jurisdiction's change of the right-of-way. If they came through, let's just say Upper Bethany, and for whatever reason, we could not do that one, and the county widened up in Upper Bethany. We may need to shift alignment because we certainly don't want to be underneath the roadway then. But in general, yes, those plans are good.
The only other change that you could expect would be an industry standard, such as where four was sufficient years ago, six is now, if they change that to a seven or eight.
Potentially. I mean, we are somewhat limited by what we have feeding those lines. And so, you know, you can't do much about that part.
I will, but to kind of answer that question with a little bit more depth, let's say we're able to do one, but we can't do the subdivision.
Fox Run.
Fox Run. And we come back in, three years from now, the city says, okay, we've got no money to do this now. We need to resubmit it to EPD and get their approval again. But that's a, that's a little bitty issue. EPD is very amenable to approving plans.
And if I could, so just to kind of piggyback off what the mayor had said, I believe at the mayor regular meeting and kind of what Kim and Corky and the team have kind of reinforced. So this goes back years in which we identified the need to solicit the services of a qualified engineering firm to look at a master plan relative to our water sewer infrastructure. Obviously, we have more needs than we have money. However, there had been an initial 20-plus million dollar GFA loan package submitted for GFA underwriters look and say, okay, well, based upon all the financial re-review and underwriting, we will loan you $8 million. So out of that, you know, GMC, another firm, has kind of identified certain projects. So what you've heard here tonight is a step, is a continued step of us trying to do what we need to do to reinvest in our infrastructure. I was talking to Mr. Faust a week or so ago, and in terms of, from my perspective, and Corky, Charles, Kim, the more qualified people can correct me, but even like the sewer rehab project. So I, the way my mind works is if you look at our sewer area and you put it into quadrants, four quadrants, the amount of money that GFA loaned to us for the sewer rehab allows us to do one project within one quadrant where there may be four projects needed. Now, that's just a city manager term, not a qualified engineer, but that's to give you the level of scale in terms of, yes, we're going to do all we can do, but realistically, there is a lot to do. So continuing to say, hey, we're delivering on these projects, you know, everything has a step. And so I'm excited that we're that much closer to, you know, beginning this process this calendar year, within the next few months. These are going to be staggered in, in terms of bids. So I think we're going to have another presentation from XT on June the 2nd to kind of get an update. So just keep that in mind in terms of the sewer rehab, you know, it's one project in one quadrant, and there's among others. So you have to start somewhere. And that's just kind of been in an area that GMC consulted with Charles to say, hey, look, if we were going to, you know, put this initial 1.5 million towards, you know, sewer rehab, where would we look? And so they spent months looking at saying, okay, here's, here's the best way to approach it. So very good, very positive.
I want to add one more note. Our plan is, when we leave here today, to send an advertisement tomorrow, to be advertised in next week's newspaper and to bid that rehab project on July the 2nd.
First.
Sorry.
First.
July 1st.
First?
First.
The first Tuesday in July.
Yes.
We had a debate about what the correct date was. How fair and weird. Whatever the first Tuesday in July is.
Anything further?
That's all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That was a wonderful arrangement, a wonderful change.
Thank you all.
First.
Thank you all.
Your undermined prevail. Thank you very much.
Next on the agenda, a public safety presentation, Chief Dawkins, Chief Sher.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm going to bring up Montana Team, he's a firefighter personnel for City of Jasper. He has been the brainchild behind this, has worked with Motorola, got us some very favorable terms. And we're going to talk a little bit about something we've already presented to the committee, which is portable radios for fire and for JPD. So just to give you a little backstory before we get started on the slideshow. Originally, when I came to Jasper, we were using what was called HT-1250s. These radios were obsolete. You could not buy any parts for them. We were having to buy parts on Amazon. We knew we had to do something. So I recall a little over a year ago, we stepped up, we went to the XPR series, which you'll see this in the PowerPoint as well. That is a good radio for industry and for business, but it is not public safety rated. That's why you see us here today, talking about radios. That being said, we've got a purpose for those radios in practice, so we have an end use for them as well. And without further ado, Mr. Teams.
Mayor and Council, appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight. Excited to discuss this proposal with you all. With that, Ms. Kim, I'm ready to get started.
Just to kind of discuss where we're at, as Chief stated, we're a, what's considered a user of the Pickens County VHF system. So we're allowing their 911 center for our communications almost entirely. This technology's existed since the early 20th century and was very popular by World War II, so troops were using this technology since that time period. So it's been around for a long time, but it had a lot of shortfalls and a lot of issues that have showed its head in recent weeks especially. Some of the coverage shortfalls that you see are Jasper Police Department's headquarters, Walmart, racetrack, and that just kind of scrapes the surface. And we can talk about automatic mutual aid responses, and the Pickens County as a whole, the coverage just continues to dissipate. So you see, it places our personnel at risk and it leaves us with inability to communicate and share that critical information that is necessary for us and to our jobs. As Chief stated, we're on the Motorola XPR platform right now. So those are good radios, but they're never intended to be marketed or used for public safety. Hospitality, tourism, those types of industries is what Motorola's target goes for. And they work well, but they don't work well necessarily for the public safety use. Another issue with the radios that we have is we don't have very much, if any at all, interoperability. What I mean when I say that is we struggle to communicate with our surrounding jurisdictions. So when we look at Cherokee, Gordon, Dawson, Gilmer, our response partners, a lot of those areas, a lot of those agencies, we don't have any ability to communicate with. So this is a severe disadvantage. So some of the continued issues that we have, and this pertains to the system as a whole, not necessarily just our portable radios, but the VHF signal is very weak at times throughout the county and throughout the city. So we don't have the ability to communicate with some of our surrounding agencies, as we discussed. Additionally, the current radios we have, they do not meet nationally recognized standards for public safety use. So we're not following the best practice. Some of the other things that the radios themselves have issue with is they're not intrinsically safe, and that's particularly important for the fire safety aspect. We're in an operating environment that conditions are favorable for explosion. These radios could actually cause that explosion through a spark. So something that comes to mind is a recent rescue that we had right here in the City of Jasper, where one of our personnel was exposed to an environment that the conditions were favorable for that to have happened. Fortunately, they didn't, but we were literally rolling the dice every time with our personnel in that situation. And then lastly, we're investing in a technology that's inadequate for current use and especially future use. Every time we have to buy a belt clip, a radio, like an antenna, we're putting money into something that's not, there's no return on that investment, so to speak. So we've kind of discussed the problem, or the multifaceted problem, if you will. So the solution to this that we've developed, working with Motorola, is the acquisition of Motorola APX Next and Motorola APX Next XE radios. They're designed by law enforcement officers and firefighters in conjunction with Motorola Solutions engineers. Additionally, the radios that the fire department will be Additionally, the radios that the fire department will be using are intrinsically safe, and they have those enhanced thermal properties. So we're in that idealized environment. We don't have to worry about a spark causing an explosion. For inside of a house fire, commercial building fire, we don't have to worry about our radio mic belting like we do now. So they're designed for the task at hand. Additionally, this will gain us interoperability with all of our surrounding agencies. So there's not a system out there in this Northwest Georgia area, Metro Atlanta, Southern Tennessee, that we can't communicate. So V H F, U H F, 700, 800. And then the piece that's really going to make the difference here is Wi-Fi and cellular. So if we go into Walmart, if we go into Piedmont Mountain Side, we're going to be able to communicate. And that's something we cannot do now because of the dead zones in our coverage area. Additionally, they'll function off of a Verizon, cellular, L T network. So we're going to increase our coverage area substantially because areas now that we don't have coverage, typically we have sunsets signal. So we'll be able to communicate much more adequately than we can now. And kind of the verbage that the industry's developed is what's called R O I P. So it's just a radio over IP, broadband patch. So the V H F to L T patch is kind of what we're shooting for there. So some of the benefits of what we're doing is it'll allow us to do the remote upgrades. So the radios, if you think of them like a cell phone, like in your pocket, they're going to have software upgrades. We can do those at the station, at the police department. We're not going to have to send these new radios off to a company or a depot. We can do them on site. So that's going to reduce any downtime that we may have. We're going to align with national standards for communication equipment. That's something we currently don't do. We're going to ensure that we have interoperability with all of our surrounding agencies. And it really places the City of Jasper in the driver's seat for future expansion and growth. And then lastly, most importantly, it's going to keep our personnel safe and give us the ability to communicate when we need to exchange that mission critical information.
Okay, I'm going to talk about a couple of other things here, as well as, you know, the proposal itself, some of the figures. But before I do that, this is, this is the previous model radio that we're talking about. This is not the actual one I'm purchasing. The one I'm purchasing is just actually the latest version, has a couple more features. But you can see the difference when you talk about this radio versus this radio. You can see the knobs are enlarged, they're designed to be operated with glove hands. You can see the lime green kind of gives it away that this is their X E, which is their extreme environment version. The light cords, everything about it is designed for firefighting. They are intrinsically safe. Like I say, we can program them in-house as well. Being tri-band, that means they will work on every band frequency that's out there right now. So if something changes in the future, we can still operate on it. It gives us that flexibility. What we priced was radio and mic 12 for the fire department, which that would opt to command staff. We would use our six on-duty firefighters. They would hand it off. Not everybody's going to have a radio due to the cost of the radios. So they would hand it off, but all the on-duty personnel would, and we would have two spares as well. That gives us the ability to have an extra truck in case we have somebody shows up off-duty or something of that nature, if we've got a spare radio in case we need one, or if we can hand one off to a partner agency or something of that nature. Also want to stress the connectivity of this. Now, this is a phased project for us. This is the first step. We can't take a step without the hardware itself, which this is the hardware. So we're trying to go P 25, which P 25 is the type of radio system, it's a digital 800 megahertz, and it is public safety compliant, just like the radios are. But we can't operate on the system until we get these radios, and then we have to work on sites and other things and other functions and parts of that program. But P 25 will enhance us in several ways. Like I say, it is rated for public safety use. Also, traditional systems like V H F, like we're on now, you have to have a repeater to operate one frequency. It has to have a frequency in, a frequency out. So let's take the J P D, for example. They have a repeater, it's at the vent tree, radio site, top vent tree, and that operates their one frequency. Well, I can't operate a fire frequency on it because it's already programmed for that one. Now, we start talking about P 25 systems, Cherokee's P 25, Morito's P 25, Dawson is going P 25, and 2026 with their S P L O cycle. I know the sheriff's office here has been pushing forward as well. But when you do that, it takes it to where I don't have to have this one piece here. We can do M O Us, and everybody works off the same tower together like a big network. It's almost like using your cell phone. Speaking of cell phones, Montana mentioned L T E. So the first step for us, we get the portables, we get the hardware to help address some of our coverage gaps immediately. Since we don't necessarily have control over the whole system, we work with Pickens 911. That's the most logical way to proceed. These radios will work with Wi-Fi networks, and they will work over L T E, either Verizon or A T and T first now. What that does for us is, like you mentioned, when you walk in the hospital, you're not transmitting on radio, not in or out. Once you go in there, it's no communication. I think it was yesterday, one of the P D or overnight, one of the P D officers was out in the hospital or something, and they had to put over, hey, hey, you're going to call me by cell. Radio's not going to work. So you get in that situation, this other officer out there that's on duty on patrol, they get into a situation, they're going to have to rely on somebody to call via cell phone. Whereas these will pick up on that Wi-Fi, and they can still transmit. Also, they're GPS compatible, so one officer can see the other officer's location. If you get foot chase or something like that, they're going to know exactly where they are. Something bad happens, they know exactly where that person or that radio is at, so they can locate. Same for us in fires, especially large buildings, things like that. The L T E component, that's going to help us in spots right now where the V H F doesn't necessarily transmit well, such as down the racetrack, I know J P D has issues down there and some other places. These radios, if we can use the L T E service to still transmit over the V H F. In other words, they're using cell service where their current radio reception won't work. So that gives us three different avenues, the regular V H F, the Wi-Fi in certain places, and the L T E component. All right? For J P D, we actually priced 20 radios and little padded body mics as well. I believe theirs are Bluetooth instead of wired. Isn't that correct? That was one option that we could discuss. Okay. So that's a possibility as well. I think they also have the cameras built in, don't they?
That is correct.
Which that's an option we don't have to use. I know we already have body cameras now, but those actually are built in. If that service is not something we've identified in the package, that's something J P D, if they wanted to go to later, they could identify and possibly make that change. But for them, it's 20 that way that everybody would have one. They're a little different from us. You know, they may go in service immediately from the car when they pull into town, so they didn't have radio on. It's kind of hard for them to meet up for shift change and pass off radios when they may go in service and out of service, not see each other at the same time. Now, for the expense part of this, obviously, these radios are expensive. Mr. Teames has worked with Motorola to get some very favorable terms. This is a lease purchase option. Mr. Seifert has already looked at it and vetted it as well. They have agreed to zero interest, 0% interest over a five-year plan. So we get the technology upfront, we pay for it over time with no debt service. So the total price is $474,103. That is for the two patches that we have to put in and the radios. We have to put the patches in 911 to be able to communicate over the L T. And what that does is that allows us to have all the technology upfront. We pay for it over a five-year period. Our annual payments would be $94,800.60. I know that is a lot of money. It's not that it sounds like it is, because it is a lot. But with, you know, price increases coming, we've already been told that this deal expires for us, June 15. So after that, there's going to be no 0%. They've already told us, and prices will go up as far as the actual technology itself, the actual hardware. We're conservatively expecting, when I say conservative, I mean, we're trying to be low in the number. We're expecting probably a $200,000 increase if we went out and did this again in a couple of months.
Chief, you discussed the three options, L T E, the actual radio band, and then Wi-Fi. And somewhat, can you talk about the memory storage on Wi-Fi and how that works?
So we can store up to 25 S S I Ds for 25 different locations. The personnel do not have to switch or change anything when they walk in the building. If the signal is stronger through the Wi-Fi than it is through the V H F, they will automatically swap. And what we would do is we'd look at our target locations where we have issues, which is our larger structures, metal roofs, such as, you know, our schools. We have rear door section in our schools. We also have door section, Walmarts, Home Depot, our big box stores, we have problems. Mainly due to metal roof and obstructions of getting that signal back to the tower. V H F is a little out of sight as far as where that, you know, transmit out of that antenna back to the repeater.
Thanks, sir. One other question, you have the police department, the fire department, do those 25 have to be the same?
They are 25.
The 25 memory slots?
No, they do not. Also, I need to mention that there is the critical connect features, such as the wireless and, I mean, Wi-Fi and the L T E. Obviously, there's the cost associated with that. That would not go in this program. That would go, and not to our existing cell phone. That would be a service fee that we pay annually to Motorola, which would be $10,800. We do not have to pay that the first year. The first time we would have to pay anything would be June 1st, 2026. They went ahead and took care of the first year. We've also, I believe, negotiated to have warranty built in as well.
We'll do a five-year warranty, which is the best in the industry. Additionally, they've added accidental coverage for no cost to us. So if a radio was destroyed on the fire scene or lost in foot chase, they will cover that radio at no cost to us for five years. So that's unheard of in the industry.
They also, I believe, the discount they gave us was, I don't know. I believe it's close to $100,000, if I'm not mistaken. What was it?
Was it like $139?
I believe that's what was listed. I think it was $139 in there.
Thanks, sir. Anything further?
We would ask that council, you know, either forward to the council meeting, full council meeting, or put places on consent agenda due to the time constraints. We have to act, otherwise we'll, like I say, we'll lose our terms June 15.
Council, any questions? Administration, any comments?
Absolutely. So Montana and Chief Sher had approached me, I think, March or April. And they called me before I started thinking about budgets. So it was definitely great timing on their part. They gave a really good analysis. And obviously, my background is, these are things that are just normal. So you may recall me saying this, you know, about five years ago. Because quite candidly, in 2020, we were still in the midst of trying to, at this time, figure out how we're going to continue to pay for vehicles. So we weren't necessarily worried about technology in so much as the vehicles. So the 2020 S P L O that began July 1 of 2020 afforded us the opportunity to begin our pursuit of utilizing those S P L O monies to purchase vehicles, apparatus, equipment, et cetera. So to me, this is just a natural progression of saying, we've addressed these other things over the last five years. The communication piece, whether you put it on the front end, the middle, or the back end, is still critical in terms of our public safety and how they do their jobs. I would equate a radio to telling Josh, hey, go out there and dig that ditch, but we're not going to give you a Traco, here's some shovels. So part of us approaching this with the committee, this was an abbreviated version of the PowerPoint. There were Assistant Chief Davis had some really good insight in terms of his background, in terms of what it feels like to not be in communication because of the lack of ability with radio handheld because of no service. I think that in and of itself had the committee saying, look, go ahead and let's put this on the work session for council, all of council to hear. From a financial perspective, this is not one of those situations that, as the city manager, finance, deputy manager, chiefs, we don't look at it and say, well, great presentation, but we just don't have the money. No, we do not have this budgeted. That is absolutely correct. However, last year, the foresight that you all had to encumber S P L O monies specifically for Perro, the fire station, for the fire engine, for the matching tap crack, has afforded us the chance to say, we've encumbered those monies, and any little bit extra that continues to come through, instead of us just, you know, saying, okay, well, let's do this, let's do this, let's do this, has allowed us the chance to say, we could end June 2026 with either 20,000 or 200,000 worth of S P L O overages with all of the identified projects checked off. So when this was approached, the idea is we're probably going to land in that sweet spot of being able to put about 100,000 on this from 2020 S P L O, based upon some of our forecasting models. So at that point, the number that Chief had provided you of 90-something thousand is realistically about 70-something thousand that could amortize over the life at 0%. Again, when you're dealing with capital purchases, I'm of the mindset that you're not dealing with ongoing operational year after year after year. If you wanted to then supplement and put money from savings, fund balance into to buy that debt service down even more, payment even less, or just to outright buy it. There are options that are coming up. You're going to hear the 2026 project list, whether or not there's some monies carved out of that to help pay for this in its entirety. That's one reason why I was not necessarily concerned about how we would pay for it. It was a matter of if this is something that council wanted to direct us to move forward with, the committee, I don't want to speak for them, but they seem to be very receptive to say, hey, put it out there, figure out how you're going to pay it, give us some options. And I think that Montana's done a phenomenal job in at least keeping the vendor to the point of our schedule. Because I think probably March is when this began, and just through the April meeting to then here, to then June, I do think that if this is something we want to do, then June 2nd would be an appropriate consideration. Because if in fact, one of our partners decides that they do want to pursue this, and they pull the trigger in a year or two, we will not have an option, correct? So it's all of a sudden, instead of us being able to strategize and plan and budget, it is then going to be a presentation of, well, our partners have switched. That's fine, that's the industry. We have to switch. Now, we've moved forward in other areas or other projects, and maybe now we didn't do it. So to me, this is something that is just another piece of giving the firefighters and police officers the tools they need.
Thank you, sir. Kim, some being proactive and reactive.
And please, if there's anything, Kim, Lindsey, Chief Dawkins, I know you've been super duper excited, especially on the financing. He was with us with sharpening pencils, so.
Councillors were expensive.
Council, moving this along to the next regularly called council meeting, is there any objection to this being a consent agenda?
I have no problem.
There are no objections, that's a rule of consent for next council meeting.
I do think that Brenda kind of touched on it a little bit. We talked about it in the committee meeting, that we had to build the base before we could go any further. And this is the next step in going further and giving them the tools that they need to work with Josh and Charles, everybody else, you know, you just got to start the base, and that's what we've done. And now we've got to build up with them.
Absolutely. Mr. Teames, thank you for the precious time and energy. That's a good one, Chief. Chief, thank you.
Very good.
Mr. Mayor, we do have some additional public safety presentations.
Yes.
You ready?
Continue on, Chief.
Okay. So the major thing for public safety for S P L O, I think in both departments is going to be addressing training. We've got some great staff members. They're very knowledgeable, they're hungry, they want to learn. For us, it's having the facilities to do it and build those out. Fortunately, you know, myself and Chief Dawkins, we work well together. We've seen some things to where we can work with each other's, you know, ideas to have training for both departments. We've identified two pieces of property that are city-owned that we would like to be able to utilize and build out to a certain extent for training. One's going to be Pioneer Road, one's going to be on Cove Road. Both properties can be utilized, like I said, for multidisciplinary training. In other words, we can do, you know, everything from fire control to search and rescue, a myriad of things. That's an identified S P L O project for us that we would like to be, you know, have considered. I think you have some other items as well.
We're talking about S P L O side, we'll get, I'll stay with training for right now for P D side. Marksmanship is always very important, being able to utilize the weapons that we carry. Marksmanship is always very important, being able to utilize the weapons that we carry. But also situational training, so handling domestic calls. Some here have seen it firsthand. Traffic stops, felony stops. These are all things that officers are going to deal with on a daily basis at any point in time. It could be nothing going on and then right now something pop off and we all have to leave. Active shooter. All of this can be handled at one of those locations. We can do that with anybody on duty, off duty. We can call in, have training. We also utilize seminition rounds, which are not live rounds, but basically paintball. They're not paintball. They're a lot worse. But they get your attention and it's good training for them. Because what I have seen in my time here, I guess coming on 20 years, is lack of training. So therefore, the muscle memory is not there for our officers. They have gotten a lot better. We have beefed up our training over the three years that I've been in this position. But it's all academic. Most of it, not all, but most of it is academic. And therefore, hands-on training, that's where you get that muscle memory. We would be training a lot. Probably, they would probably get sick and tired of it because that's how much I want them to know if something happens, they're not just going to freeze up and be able to react. So that's, that's my part on the training area. I have a couple of things as far as SPOSS goes with vehicles. I think it was three years ago, we put in the take-home program. So we got seven cars the first year. I think it's five Tahoe's and two Explorers, something like that. Well, we're coming up on five years now. So we're going to have to start. If we're going to stay on this process and we don't go backwards, because we don't want to go backwards, we've got to start rotating. So in the next, I'd say every year, we need to start looking at getting one to two cars, really two cars, and taking some of these out. We have one Tahoe that has 60,000 miles on it already. But it's at five years. We got to, we have to determine if it's going to be 100,000 miles. We rotate it for five years or vice versa, whichever comes first, kind of like a warranty. We have four pickups. We have one Tahoe that the Assistant Chief drives. It's got over 160,000 miles on it. And Chevy Lightning, it's been doing good. We have two Explorers, four Explorers. There are 2,000, well, I think we have one now. So we're in the auction. We have one of those and then we have some older models that CID is using. And then we have one pickup out of the four that is used as a pool car. So we have to start looking at rotating these cars out. Because we're going to end up on that right to where we were in 2020, trying to find a bunch of cars at one time. And it's not going to work out. And then I had some information come across. As you know, our vest, we have to, every five years, we have to replace our vest. That's the thing. So who would have ever thought Glock would start discontinuing models? So they had taken a list, a large list of, we have the Glock 22, which is a Ford Calvin. That is being discontinued. They're staying with the nine millimeters. They're trying to just bring it all into one. So I thought, and I do believe I told Assistant, the City Manager and Deputy City Manager is going to be probably starting in probably a year, year and a half, two years. I was wrong. They've already started. So how they're doing it is if whatever vendor or whatever distributor has them, they're out, they're out. They're not going to get any more. So we need to start looking at replacing our weapons probably within the next, you know, soon. Say at least a year, because they're going to, Glock's still going to continue to refurbish, work on them, whatever we need to do for law enforcement. But looking at it right now would be around $40,000 just to replace our weapons. That's the weapons. That's the holsters. That's ammo, all that. That's kind of where we're at on the SPOSS things to look at.
I've got a couple of items as well outside of training, which is a joint endeavor for us. Obviously, we all know that shortly after I arrived in Jasper in 2022, we ordered a Sutford fire engine. And we are still waiting on said Sutford fire engine to arrive. It was delayed a year on us and then now several more months. We're expecting delivery of that apparatus, hopefully in February or March is what we're being told from Queens Fire Apparatus, our dealer. That was a big step for us because right now, our newest engine is a 2018 model. And then we have a 2008 model engine and a 2003 model. Now, best practice is they stay in service for 15 years and then they're reserved for five, and then they're out. Obviously, fire apparatus prices are going to the roof. Lead time to go to the roof. So I've identified a little bit better option. That way, it also saves us some money, but helps them reduce time. We're thinking about possibly refurbishing Engine 3. It was bought in Newmont City, Jasper, 2003 model. It is pre-emissions, pre-def, pre a lot of things that causes issues with our newer apparatus. We have reached out to Friendly Fire, Friendly Mountain Fire Apparatus, who we purchased the ladder truck from, and current Engine 3. They've told us it's about a year lead time for a very intensive refurbishment. The only downside to that, it's still around $400,000 to do it. But that being said, the engine that we have on order, I believe, $660,000, if I'm mistaken. Lindsay, am I right? Okay. She says it's more, $670,000. Now, that same apparatus with less features is 900 plus. So it's gone that much over. It costs three years. So we believe refurbishment's a good option. That way, we can be fiscally responsible, less lead time, and still get a fire apparatus that will last us longer. Obviously, it will not last us as long as a brand-new apparatus, but it buys us plenty of time. And allows us to keep rotating other items that we need as well. Another project for us is to kind of continue some of our rotations that we've put in place. We've been doing it over the years, such as purchasing four air packs a year. That's something we're still looking to continue. That way, we can eventually turn over our entire inventory. And. Well, technical rescue is the last thing. Our guys have made a big commitment to being able to execute technical rescue, such as confined space rescue. We've done several road rescues out of county, helping out. But we're making the investment on the training side. We've been making some of the investment on the equipment side, but we probably need to spend, I would say, a good $35,000 to get us what we need on confined space side. We're good on the road rescue side. And the next natural progression is confined space. We've got the people that are getting the training, but we're going to have to have the equipment to be able to execute as well.
Chief, do you also have a small fleet, Davey?
We could do, well, I'm not going to say could. We definitely do need one more vehicle on small fleet. Because right now, that would allow us to phase out our 2017 Ford Explorer. It would go to a pool vehicle and allow us to decommission the 2005 Chevy Colorado that we're using. Because right now, that's the only thing we have as far as a pool vehicle. That would also provide our people something to utilize to drive the train. That way, they're not taking personal vehicles and we're not paying mileage.
Thank you, sir.
And Mr. Mayor, if I could.
Yes, sir. So Chief and Chief are super duper excited to talk about SPOSS. We'll talk about that a little later. So what I want to do is kind of bring it back around to, and part of it is Chief Dawkins is the one just to kind of get the initial start before Chief Sher gets it on and then the other departments. But what I want us to do is, is coming out of the committee meeting last month, we had talked about the communication. So Mr. Faust, I mean, Mr. Hannah and Ms. Anne had said, hey, let's put this on the work session to talk about the communication and talk about the training. Again, as Ms. Anne, we've started building the base. So you've got the equipment. You've got the people. You've got the stuff. Now the training. They've already been doing a really good job, but what we wanted to do was present council with the option to say, look, we have a couple of properties that would not be too terribly invasive and residential or other things that you could still function very inexpensively. Again, this is an unbudgeted item. And so when the idea got started, it's okay, what's it going to cost? We do not know. So the idea being is, we know that if you set a number of 20,000, the department will spend 19,999,000. So that's fine. But what we wanted to do is say, conceptually, are you okay saying, yes, let's move forward on these locations collectively as a collective body? And then identify some use of fund balance, savings account, to put some seed money into giving them the stuff they need to get started. Now, clearly, Chief Sher and his team are all in on doing the fire station. So in all reality, if we were to encumber some capital monies for the fire department, for their location, it may be late this year, early first quarter next year before they're really moving forward on it. Because again, we have limited resources in terms of time and staff. One step forward, fire station, move a list. Chief Dawkins and his team, they can begin almost immediately if council wants to at the June meeting. So yes, let's move forward in the training, put forward in an amendment, an amount. The location we already own is no big deal. If it's going to cost you 45,000 to $5,000 worth of SIM rounds to begin to build a stockpile along with some other issue, other little things for the stocks and the other things, the marksmen, let's do it. That was the idea behind the training aspect because instead of us just saying, well, well, this is what we need. We're presenting to y'all and say, do y'all want us to continue movement in this direction? And there will be an element of cost associated that had not been budgeted. So that was the idea behind giving y'all this insight this evening. And I know Mr. Faust is not here. I don't know if we want to kind of reintroduce this again on the second or if we want to just give an abbreviated presentation on that Monday.
Thank you, sir. Counsel, I'll place this on the agenda for the next meeting. I will not ask for it to be considered for consent. What I'll ask for is consensual public safety use of properties with not to exceed amounts to be presented by the administration.
May I add something?
Yes, sir.
This is probably the first time, well, it is the first time, that fire and police have been able to work together. So like, they get on the scene and we show up or vice versa, we kind of know what they're working to. They're not just standing there with their hand in their pockets guessing. The active shooter, I bring that up. We would do like real scenes where we're working hand in hand, using turnip cuts, using all that kind of stuff. So when firemen and police officers are together, it's just one public safety. Beforehand, it was just, that fire will be here in a minute. Hang on. You know, that's no more. So I just wanted to put that tidied in there.
Thank you, sir.
All right.
I was just going to say, Assistant Chief Mike Davis is very passionate about training and understands the needs. So if you have thoughts about it or want to know more, he's a great person to reach out to and speak with about this.
Very much so.
All right. Thank you, Chiefs. There we go. The next item on the agenda, City Manager's Office update. Mr. Davis?
Yes, sir. Just going to kind of tee it up. We've kind of enumerated it down. So a personal handbook. I think there may be some comments or questions or dialogue, so just kind of open it up.
Has counsel, each member had a chance to review the handbook and read it?
Yes, I was the one that Dan was referring to last meeting.
No, you're not the only one.
But yes, I have been able to read it. And I do have some things that I want to discuss.
Yes, sir.
All right. One, this is just from my lack of knowledge, the recorded time. I just didn't know, at what point in time do we move away from manual timing? You know, I'm sure it's cumbersome for managers, directors, employees. So I don't know if there's any opportunity there. So I was thinking through, reading through it.
Could that be a SPOSS initiative?
I would.
So I'll tell you, both Lori and I, just a simplistic answer is, we have been in such different environments to where there is no paper. Number one, there's just no paper. So everything's electronic. So the answer is, yes, we can. It is just a money issue. That's it. That is, that is just. We don't have time clocks in other jurisdictions that we're part of. It's all electronic. It's either on your phone or computer or whatnot. So 100%. And I think Ms. Lori had even suggested that in the text of the handbook, we can modify the language to reflect that if we're able to, four or five years from now, you know, do something that it would reflect accurately instead of the paper recording.
Manual time clock is just something a little bit more generic. It says the city, you know, something along the line of the city will have a timekeeping system that will be explained to you by your department. So it takes out that manual car. So as we move forward, you can make that change. And yes, that's been my experience out of work with electronic time clock for the last 10, 15 years. It can accommodate, most of them can accommodate even down to the quad weeks for our department, 28-day cycle. It makes it much easier. You can roll it over. They also accommodate for time accrual. So like when department leads go in and somebody's submitting it, they can put it, and actually, the employee can request approval through that system. And then the department leads, as they're looking at, can approve it. They can also see the balance. There's multitude of things. It comes down to, as Mr. Douglas said, the cost of it. The time clocks, a lot of people's gone away from it. It's more used on your phone. You can put geofencing into it so it restricts the area where you can fly in. You can do it from a desktop. You can do it from something as simple as a screen and a keyboard that's posted for a clock might be. So there's multiple avenues that we can definitely look into. I've talked with Ms. Lindsay. There's a couple I'm familiar with. We talked about just continually getting some information on that. Now, it may not be the immediate time, but I can appreciate your questions, sir.
And as changes like that are brought, this is not a Bible. The handbook can be updated. So it, the handbook's not limiting us from that.
No, 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 no. I was just sitting there. Rain was running at 100 miles an hour, thinking through it. I'm like, man, I can't imagine how easy that is for people. Next up, should I just go through my list here?
Yes, you can go right ahead.
Cobra qualifying event. I didn't know if we needed to call out any qualifying event.
Ms. Trent, currently in our benefits guide, that's where it's more relevant. It has lots of changes of it. It tells an employee exactly what it is. Our insurance broker provides that. Myself and Miss Stacy will notify them if someone has left or has a life event that requires a change in it. And they will notify the person, the member, whether that be like in case of a divorce, a spouse can still stay on Cobra for up to 15 months. So they take that initiative and they send them the paperwork. Whereas it starts a process. It gives a lot of explanation.
Okay, perfect. The education assistant program, and it's more so just asking, making sure, like, the language in there was like, if it's there, then we will reimburse up to X amount.
The process that we're hoping to put in place, we've got two forms. One is a request. Like say, if I wanted to go to Mr. Douglas and say, I want to start a ticket this, so this is my forecasted experience. So when we go into the budget process, it's one of the things that can be submitted to Ms. Lindsay and Finance. It records that, whether it be Chief Dawkins or Chief Sher, if they have three people working on a bachelor's degree. The city currently reimburses up to $1,500. We did not put that specific amount because it limits you a little bit when it's impossible because you have to make a change, not that you couldn't. But it just says anywhere up to the IRS limit. The IRS limit's quite big. It's $5,300. So I don't foresee that. But for budget purposes, if I submit those requests, then the department leads can bring it to Lindsay and Mr. Douglas and Ms. Kim and go over that and include it or see if they can. But we do have key parts that is supposed to be relevant to their job or emotionally within their current job process. So those forms, one's a request for the budget process, the others are reimbursement. Once they get through it, they have to supply by their transcript, transcripts, yeah, transcripts, for their grants as well as any type of grants that they receive. Because we will not pay double payments. So if they have a grant that covers something, the city will reimburse on top of that. That makes sense.
Yeah, no, it makes sense. PTO, I didn't know. This is just me thinking outside the box here. Instead of payout, do we look at roll? Is there any benefit to one or the other?
Can you explain a little bit more?
Like, wasn't there language in? Like, wasn't there language in there about the payout of PTO?
That is for just an annual thing, if it budget allows. The city's kind of done that in the past where they've allowed an employer, like say if I've got eighty hours or hypothetically eighty hours, and the city says, okay, I can cash it up to forty, usually in the fourth quarter, if people, you know, struggling a little bit with the holidays, that is a potential opportunity, but not necessarily always given, so that's why it's a little bit more vague. Now, as far as a payout when someone leaves, in the proposed policy, it says that someone leaving with at least ten years or more, if they're retiring or resigning, they have a max amount of two hundred and forty, which is a reduction from the current, which is four eighty. And then the employee that just leaves, if they're just resigning, it's less than ten years, the max they can receive is eighty. And it's based on the annual hours worked, so the fireplace is.
Yeah, I just didn't know if it'd save us money, you know, instead of having to pay out, if we can say, hey, we're going to roll over forty, sixty, whatever hours dictate, so.
Well, now we.
Part of that is that you're building a liability, an uncontrolled liability, because after those hours could accrue into a lot more money than.
Yeah, but then you're still captive at how much you can pay out if someone were to leave. That's your safeguard.
I think if you're rolling it over, there is.
You're talking about here, is that what you're talking about, Sam? It was always, we have a accrual, according to the proposed policy, we do have a accrual level that can continue to accrue, as Mr. Williams was saying, your liability lies with what you're going to pay out when someone leaves. As far as, as long as you have it, you can accrue, doesn't really, no disrespect, it doesn't really matter how much you allow someone to carry over or keep at any given time, it's just what you're going to pay out to your liability.
Yeah.
Yeah, we, I think, I think the policy allows for a thousand hours rollover. So what happened is like, for instance, it, once you get to a thousand hours, then yes, you won't roll over. It's not a user loses each annual year.
Oh, okay.
It's a, your cast is.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. I know, I know a lot of governments, private, user loses within a year, and there's this mass exodus, the government's never been able to do it because you, you know, you just can't, you can have, you know, a hundred hours and it's like, well, I can't leave, you can have a thousand hours, well, I've got to have you. So we don't, we don't really lose it until, you know, get to that max.
Yes, sir. Okay, thank you, that's a lot. And then bereavement, it saw three days in there, and then there was language about extenuating circumstances. I can talk about my benefits and how we handle it, and I thought it was a real simple and easy way, in town three days, out of town five days, and maybe that will help out with the extenuating circumstances, so.
How do you define in town and out state?
Oh, well, I would say in-state, out-of-state, or, well, I don't know.
Yeah, out-of-state, me too, or, or an hour and a half north.
So travel though, I mean, think about three days, five days, I mean, if you're going out of town anyways for a funeral, you want that time traveled instead of, all right, I got one day driving, one day to be with family, friends, and then another day driving back.
So I'll tell you, whenever staff is going to do a handbook, it's always that balance between, if you're asking me, I'm a hundred and ten percent always going to err on the side of the benefit of the employee. I love five days. So what we try to do is find that industry standard governmental mix, and so with Ms. Lori, the handbook mirrors a lot of other surrounding jurisdictions. So if council wants to do five for bereavement, I promise you, we're not going to, because if somebody were to come to me and say, hey, so-and-so's, you know, spouse passed or family member or whatever, and they've got to do this, this, and this, that's the, the family of having seventy-plus employees, we're going to do it. I don't mind making a richer amount to give, so then that way the employee doesn't feel like, well, I got to go ask for this, you got to ask. I'm fine with just saying five days bereavement, we just hit the mark because usually industry standard, at least governmental, is about the three day with extenuating. So like I say, tongue in cheek, I'm all for where council would love providing, and I think, I think the staff would as well.
I think the other end of it is that, yeah, if there was that situation, city manager has the ability to make a decision on it. That's in the policy, because I'm.
Yeah.
I think there's some protections in the policy.
That's it?
That's all I have.
But thank you, I mean, seriously, so.
Those are just very good questions and thoughtful comments.
Thank you for the brief minutes. Tough, tough read.
That's it.
Okay. Any further comments on personal handbook?
I.
Looking for a move on the agenda? Counsel, are you objection to this being a consent item on next agenda?
No problem.
No, because Jim and I would like to not discuss it again.
Yes, let's present it on consent.
Staff would also like to not discuss.
We'll present it on consent for next agenda. Adam B., potential splosh, two thousand twenty-six projects, Mr. Douglas?
Yes, sir, thank you. So. I think y'all may have had a form, letter provided to you, maybe? The mayor had received a letter from the chair relative to engaging us about the 2026 SPOSS, and I think what we wanted to do is adhere to their recommendation of, they have a meeting on June the tenth wherein they were going to, I guess, ask the mayors what the list of projects were. So I thought it would be, and then, and you'll see that the letter is just an imitation, they've identified five years as the benchmark for which they want to pursue a SPOSS referendum. So I wanted to kind of give a little bit of background in terms of, you know, the special purpose local option sales tax, which is not a general fund tax, it's not a, it's a, if you drive through Jasper, you stop at Publix, you get something, you go on to Blue Ridge, or you go back to Kansas, I don't care, you're spending that penny, sales tax up here. So part of what, there's a lot of stuff that you're going to hear me say that may sound very convicting and definitive and fact-based, but the reality is, we do not know until June tenth. But we still have to make certain assumptions and/or ideas about what the implications are because in order to meet the auditatory, get in on the referendum in the fall, all that stuff, you know, we have to start pretty quickly in saying, hey, the county wants to do a five year. Now, obviously, remember that we did a six-year in 2019. There's two methods of collection in accordance with OCGA, so the code gives the county the ability to call a SPOSS meeting to order. And they can elect to do an intergovernmental agreement with a jurisdiction or jurisdictions, cities of any jurisdiction that has fifty percent or more of the population of the cities. So for instance, we have almost five thousand citizens, so we have more than the fifty percent of the total cities. So if you take all the cities, Duncan Robb, Nelson, Jasper, our population is more than fifty percent of all total. So the intergovernmental agreement is a document that the county can enter into with that jurisdiction. The other jurisdictions, i.e. the other two cities, could elect to sign on if they want to participate, meaning receive the money, or if they do not sign on, then they would not be eligible for the distribution through the collection. The state law is very specific in how they enable the county to be the driver behind this, which is just, all 159 counties, that's just the reality. So for instance, my tenure in Cobb County is every single SPOSS cycle, there would be a six-year SPOSS, you know, floated, an intergovernmental agreement would essentially say, hey, the distribution model is going to be based upon your population. So the, that's, that's just one way to do it. Another way to do it is negotiate, hey, I want to do, you know, eighteen percent, you know? Clearly, we as Jasper generate between seventy and eighty percent of all the SPOSS monies collected. So statutorily, we receive twelve cents. So what does that look like? Excuse me. For every dollar of SPOSS, we get twelve pennies. So right now, 2020, we get an extra penny, thirteen. So the idea is, on the tenth, we'll listen to the five-year SPOSS. The five-year SPOSS is considered method two under the collection and distribution of the state law. That means that based upon our population, we'll get twelve. For every dollar collected, we get twelve pennies. So estimating, pure speculation, that's fact. So estimation, speculation, about sixty million could theoretically be collected over a five-year period. Maybe it's seventy million, maybe it's eighty million, I do not know. Let's just land on sixty million, because that's what I remember. Seven point two million is what we would receive. But sixty million, we get seven. So what you're going to hear in just a moment, Kim's going to start us off, is the needs. You've heard about some of the needs, some of the stuff that we're continuing to do is because, hey, that's the cost of doing business. But you've heard too from public safety, we spent the last five years trying to catch up because all the other SPOSS cycles, even dating to the previous one from 2020, was the 2014, all of the 2014 monies were encumbered for Jasper specifically for Rose Bridges Culverts. That's it. The only time in our history that I'm aware of is that we've invested capital into anything other than that was in 2020, when we started having to catch up with all the capital needs of public safety and parks and facilities. And we still put SPOSS money into our water infrastructure. So the 2020 has been such a huge, huge windfall for us because we have been able to invest millions back into the community off of thirteen pennies. Now, it would be great if we could have more than thirteen pennies or twelve pennies. Right now, for every dollar, that's what statutorily we're going to get. So with that, I've kind of turned it over to Kim to let you listen to some of the projects, you'll hear from some of it. This, this is legitimately for you to digest because on the June second meeting, there is going to be a need for the elected body to advise Mayor Raffield how he is going to present this to the chair at the June teen, I mean, the June tenth meeting. So with that, Kim, take it away.
Thank you. So I want to thank GMC again because I think it is extremely important in the times that we are in to be extremely transparent about the situation that we are in with our utilities. June second, as Brandon has mentioned, Kinley Horn, who is our fourth partner, our second partner doing the fourth project, will be here to present on the water treatment plant and the rehab project that is involved with that. As a reminder, that is not a capacity enhancing project, that is simply showing some love to a building and a facility that is treating everyone's water, and it is critical that we put some love back into that building. In total, with these GPO projects, we have received eight million dollars worth of loans, and so it's a great step in the right direction. Through GMC's master plan though, they have developed a capital improvements plan that has identified approximately seventy-seven million dollars more of utility projects that we are going to need to plan for, and that is in today's dollars, seventy-seven million. The amount that the city collects with SPOSS is extremely beneficial, we cannot say that enough. It has enabled us to put money back into our people, into our equipment, into the things that our folks need, the things that our community needs through engines, through equipment that Public Works and the utilities use every day to make sure that this community is a great place to live. It will only cover though, a very small percentage of what we need to invest in our utilities through the capital improvements plan. One project that we would suggest y'all consider is to pledge some fraction of the SPOSS collections through this next cycle, to pledge that against the debt service on some bond issuance. That could be two-thirds, it could be three-quarters, it could be half, whatever amount it is that you feel, but that would enable us to be able to do more projects that we need to do rather than just use seven million, we'll just say that that's what the collection is, and then it ends and no one else gets a piece of the pie at that point.
And Kim, again, what she's talking about is future. So we've already got these things on the book, handled, paid for, budgeted for future. What Kim's referring to is the SPOSS, one of the ways that the state allows communities to do is you can float bonds, you can actually pay old bonds, but we're suggesting is you can float new bonds, so then that way you can go ahead and capture as much of the money as you can project out and then pledge some of the monies, future collections, so your finite period of, let's say, five years, you're now debt-free of these projects. So we're not talking about past, we are talking about future additional on top of.
Yes, absolutely. I know everyone thinks that the only thing that I'm with is utilities, and that's truly not true. Another area that I think we could definitely use some investment is, is to utilize the results of that pavement assessment condition study that council approved us to enter into last year. That work was done in November of last year, we've gotten the final reports in. You may recall that an abbreviated version of that final report was included in your council packages for the May fifth meeting. The most important thing to take away from that though, is that in order for us to resolve all of the issues that they have identified right now, we need to invest eight point three million dollars over the next five years, and that's to take care of everything. Our system was rated as a seventy-two, which sounds horrible, but it's actually pretty darn good. Very good is seventy to eighty-five, and so seventy-two, we're towards the bottom end of very good. In order to keep pace though, and keep us at a seventy-two, we would need to spend at least six hundred and eighty thousand dollars each year just to keep us at the point that we're at. And so we would ask that you consider investing a portion of SPOSS proceeds into some annual plan to address some of these pavement issues that we do have. ME has come up with some stormwater projects, I'm going to bring her page up. Bear with me here just a moment. Okay, and I need to add all the stars in.
Yeah, you can just hit the space button a bunch of times, that's where they all are.
Here, please. I got two exuberant stars.
Okay. So Josh and I have gone out and took, taken a look at our outstanding stormwater issues. So we consider these the outstanding stormwater issues, these are the ones that we walked around the city with Kinley Horn, that they were going to provide us with an assessment, prioritize, and cost that they thought it would be to provide in this, a report basically telling. provide in this, a report basically telling us, okay, you need to do this in the next two years, this in the next four years, it's going to cost approximately this. However, that was not funded in the twenty twenty-five budget. So what Josh and I had done, we've gone out and we've looked at these and put an estimated cost. Some of these may seem high and some of these Josh and I have also spoken about doing in-house. There are, for example, some areas that could possibly be done in-house, which, you know, Magnolia Station could be done in-house, that's a lot of just grading and, and redirection and replacement of smaller pipes. For the most part, the, the heavy lifts are going to be Court Street. And I'm not sure if y'all are aware of what happens at Court Street when it rains. All the water comes down the hill, comes down that road, bypasses an aged catch basin that they cleaned out last year and then it just fills back up, but it doesn't actually go anywhere. A lot of this water is supposed to dump into the railroad right-of-way, in which case we cannot alter any of those pipes that dump into that. However, what's happening is it is going, hopping the catch basin, hopping the tracks and going right into Cherokee closeouts. And it's a significant amount of rain that, or water that is coming off of the railroad tracks. So the, the water is just falling the tracks, so the course of least resistance and then just dumping in that corner and flooding that building. Another big, a big ticket item would be Indian Forest and Bird Mountain Road. There is a bridge there, there's pavement, there's storm swale running down the side. The, the possibility of losing that whole intersection and Kimberly Horn said, you know, what's going to end up happening is when this bridge collapses, and it will, it's going to pull Bird Mountain into it. So it's right at that intersection, it's probably, what, ten feet back from the actual intersection? But because of that bridge and the drop, it's about, probably twenty-five feet down to actually where the water is. If that fails, it's going to be catastrophic and pull Bird Mountain into it. So that's, that the failure is where we get up to millions of dollars to fix this. The actual fix will be, they said, close to a million dollars because of how it's all laid out there, all the erosion of, it's not easy to get to and of course they have to build a structure, another bridge over that area. The existing bridge is wood covered with asphalt. So that's, that's another big ticket item. We have a couple of smaller ones, similar to what we were talking about, frontiers up there. And as you recall, Kimberly Horn did do a design on that, that was to replace the culvert because the road is eroding. So replacing the culvert on two new headwalls, one new pipe, the water is going under the pipe right now, that isn't a flood plain. Luckily, we do own over there, so we don't have to obtain any construction easiness or anything. That's probably going to be another two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to fix. The, and we have a couple of those type situations at the frontier, what's the other one? Belav, where Belav crosses the Polcat, that's in the, the south of there, south of the screen up there. There's the same type of issue, the culvert, the road is eroding, similar to what was happening over at Jeanette when that washed out. So we have similar situations like that throughout the city. We have been talking about, you know, if we do do some things in-house, it'll probably be beneficial for the long term for not only DPW, but also utilities to purchase a couple of things like a, you know, a new laser elevation grader, you know, being able to have the right pitch in order for the water to go out. So yeah, those are, those are just the, the ones that we see now. However, we also need to talk about the day-to-day stormwater cleanouts and where it all goes. So we also have Lee Newton Park on there because they need a whole new storm system over there, including the pipes that luckily when the fifty-three comes through, they'll be replacing those box culverts. However, all of our areas from downtown to Stagall to Mary drain right in there and those pipes need to be replaced as well. One thing that we were thinking about is also was anything that we can do in, at the same time to coordinate with, if we're going to do something that's on the pavement assessment, if there's storm involved in that, piggybacking along with that, if we have to open up, if we have to grind down the road, if we have to do something, being able to piggyback on, okay, this already needs to be, we need to replace this storm drain, so let's put this area, just trench this whole area out, put a new drain in and then, you know, top the rest of it. So if we can do some coordination with that pavement plan, I think, I think we could, we could get a more bang for our buck.
And even with the tap projects too, the sidewalks that are being designed north Main Street, the twenty twenty-four tap project, you know, that's the whole shebang, that's design, that is utilities, that is construction of the sidewalk from Chambers all the way up to basically Revolution Church. They have identified some pretty significant storm issues through there as well, which is why that grant is so large, two point two million dollars. You think, there's no way that sidewalk can cost that much and you're correct, it doesn't. It's all of the other work that we have to do with the utilities in there. There are plans to upgrade the sidewalks on Stagall Drive. You know, that will take care of some of the issues and that would be an opportunity to piggyback in with storm repairs at the same time.
And so you recall last year, and I've, I've put this context because again, I think it's important to know that the reason why we have some of this information readily available is that the county had partnered with us and the other cities to say, hey, let's blow into T-SPOLOST referendum, a transportation SPOLOST. So then that way we know that there are all these needs out there. The needs have to get paid for eventually, period. So if we can capture special purpose local option sales tax, extra penny, it would have yielded us about nine million over a six-year period. We did have an IGA with the county. That nine million, as you've heard Kim and Emmy talk about, is, it would have been a humongous success because if we had eight million status quo for pavement and at least four million identified, kind of low hanging fruit of, hey, biggest bang for your buck, that's twelve million. That nine million would have been just so tremendously helpful. And not only are you doing it as a special, you're not necessarily having to do it out of SPOLOST because as you heard begin with, Kim started with some, some water, waste water needs based upon the master plan. You heard me say seven million. If the projection's seventy million, eighty million, do the math, twelve percent, you know, whatever that is. So again, we're going to get into it a little bit more with some other departments, but just those three, I wanted you to kind of capture, write down. You seventy-seven million, eight million, four million, we got seven million, most likely statutorily. You heard Chief Dogg kind of jumped again a little bit, but I won't to further just expound on, in all seriousness, you start something, you got to continue to sustain it or else you're going to be right back where you're at ten years later, five years later. So we cannot ignore having to reinvest in some of the basic equipments. So how many vehicles over the five-year period starting twenty twenty-six to twenty thirty-one, what's the number of vehicles that you would need?
Say, we're looking at ten vehicles overall.
And, and how much is one vehicle?
Seventy-five to seventy-eight thousand. That's right now. What down the road that we're going to have on that?
So ten times seventy-five, seven fifty. And that's not including equipment, that's just, well, equipment in the cars. That's not including lots or body cameras or even ammunition or other, you know, Kevlar vests. Chief Chair, you talked a little bit about, and so realistically, you and I've talked about it, that one of the engines by the time, if, if a new SPOLOST is approved, you know, what would be the age of yours at that point in, in twenty thirty-one?
Twenty thirty-one, we would still, we'll still have a two thousand and three on the road in service because for us, we keep three in-service engines at all times. And then we have a ladder truck as well, so that's what we look at because we bought every refurbished and expectation, life span expectation for it's ten years, frontline service. That's going to put all those kind of coming, following right there on top of each other at the end of the SPOLOST line.
So how much?
As far as price tag goes, right now to replace that, that ladder truck, which we've paid, you know, our refurbished, we paid three hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars. You buy that same truck new right now, it's at least one point five million. And that's probably a conservative estimate. The engines right now are going for right around one million dollars for difference. And three times for four years.
So, so Mr. Mayor, Council, I think part of the, the, I guess, reason we're wanting to do this is I think Kim and I had talked because in twenty nineteen, I don't think the elected body was afforded the opportunity to kind of walk through this process of kind of enumerating some of the needs. So I do think it's important, it's not to become so, you know, scared that, oh my gosh, we're imminent. It, it is to identify that we have a fraction of what we're going to be able to get, but yet here are the needs. And this is where it is difficult for us to, Kim and I, when we talked with the department leaders, you know, how do you tell Charles, yes, we know that there's, you know, seventy million dollars, we've got seven. If council says, hey, all seven's going to be pledged towards water service. Okay, well, then when the vehicle breaks down, that is then a general fund operating cost that we have to buy. We cannot not provide basic stuff for departments. That was one of the fears I had in nineteen is I would look out my window and see, you know, broke down vehicles and the chief at the time would come and say, well, I don't know what to do. So Kim, what, have anything we want to put Charles and Josh on the spot with us?
Well, I think, you know, I don't want to speak for y'all, but if there is the desire to be doing some of these projects that Emmy talked about, stormwater, you're going to have to have a bigger machine. You know, you'll need a real excavator, a full-size.
And, and a lot of the pavement assessment part of it. I hate to try to pave if, if the storm is just all pieces. I mean, there's no need in doing pavement if the road criminal, it's just, we're, we're patching, we're patching and nothing, nothing against resolve.
So in all fairness, with the pavement assessment plan, it does identify in there, you know, there's a storm issue here that is creating this problem or you've got a void underneath here and so you need to look around and see what it is that's creating that area. And you know, overall, again, a seventy-two is pretty darn good. I, I was anticipating that we would have gotten a lower score just based on visually looking around and our system is in pretty good shape, but we do need to be planning for the future.
A lot of the, you know, to, to Josh's point, that great work that he was doing up there on the spring, right?
Yes.
The biggest issue is he has no more shoulder. So it's just road and rocks in a lot of those areas that you, you fixed up because there's no longer that shoulder, even just a little bit. So if we are doing repaving, we have to address storm and we have to create a shoulder as well in order so that we can get that storm, you know, the two to three feet away from the edge of pavement to prolong what we're putting in. So there's, there's a couple of different things and I think, you know, I agree also with Kim that, you know, if we're going to start doing some things in-house, and I think there, there is quite a few items that we can do, but we are going to need to, the utilization of larger women, you know.
And as an example too, I know the Parson Committee, Mr. Hannah, Mr. Paus, we had met, I guess, two months ago, first of April, end of March. It was a cold and blistery day that the city manager decided to get frostbite. But just as an example, we were talking about the same thing at Lee Newton of some of the upgrades that have been identified, I think in twenty-three exceeded the range of three hundred plus thousand, maybe even four hundred plus thousand. So we were going to move forward with a thirty thousand dollar fix. It's, it's similar to Elizabeth Street, us repairing the sinkhole in twenty nineteen and then coming back and spending forty thousand on doing some more stuff to look at the street. So the thirty thousand we're going to invest in Lee Newton to, to kind of upgrade some of the pedestals, et cetera. That's a major event area for our community. We do need to continue to invest in there. You know, what does that look like? The, the funds, it's, it's, the sky's the limit in terms of, okay, well, throw it out there, a million dollars. Because by the time, you know, we get around to it, this is going to need, this is going to need, not even taking the, the storm work into effect just in terms of some of the, the functioning of the space. And I don't want to speak for Mr. Hannah, but that's just one of those other things that when you're out there, you're kind of assessing, you're walking, you're looking, it's, we're doing a tremendous job with thirteen pennies. So I do not want to discount the fact that the monies that we have got from twenty twenty has been phenomenal. It's just, we have to be cognizant of the fact that sixty, seventy, eighty million that may be collected, we're going to get seven, eight, nine million of that. And so, don't know if Sam, don't know if you wanted to have anything to say.
Well, I think it's kind of like we talked about with building the base again. Charles has been here for a very long time, he's seen us go through putting Band-Aids on, putting Band-Aids on, putting the Band-Aids. You got to come to a point where stop putting the Band-Aids, even if we do a small section and do it right. Instead of, you know, even if we could do one, that's better than what we've been doing over and over and over and those guys see it just like, you know, the police and the fire department as well. So I, I think we have to, and, and everybody knows we can't do it all, but we got to figure out and do some pieces for all, all the departments and figure out where our priorities are on that and continue to build on, you know, and invest in our employees with that.
All within two weeks.
You can do it.
So, so part of, Mr. Mayor, what, what we had talked about, I don't know if council also, you know, kind of us have put down a, a list of what we've kind of said, we just, we did not want to overwhelm because we do know how it can feel to say, hey, guys, you're, you're out here every day, help us to prioritize the seventy-plus million. I mean, we're clearly, you know, if the direction is, well, the easiest thing to do is to have in the referendum language that all of the proceeds will be used to pledge against water service problems. And then you're drawing down from the master plan and so it's not subjective to the point of it's based upon this strategy that this plan has been, been crafted by GMC. Conversely, you know, the only thing to Miss Anne's point that we were trying to do is say, hey, if, if two-thirds, one-half, whatever that is, is pledged against that and then the others are then enumerated into a, a percentage of, hey, a million here, million there, half a million towards parks, green space, you've got obviously public safety and then facilities.
I think the list would be very helpful in prioritizing the project.
Because I think everybody has their committees and, and everybody sees the big picture, but also that would, I think, help some of us on, on some different areas that we're not on that committee.
Yes.
Anything for you, Kim? Before we move on from this, I would, I will say, we have plans in place for our infrastructure. We have plans for our departments. We have plans for the community and how we're going to address these things the right way. We have needs and for each need, there is a plan prepared or a plan being prepared, which is the master plan. The other thing is we have great partners. I can trust that we have been making things right for years now, we continue to make it right. As you mentioned, we operate on a few pennies, right now it's thirteen, statutorily it would be twelve. I'm encouraged, I'm optimistic with our good partners at the county. They understand that city residents are also county residents and that they represent every county resident as we represent the city. Our roads, streets and bridges are used by every resident in order to come to town and use. and use facilities, whether they're county or city, you're utilizing our roads at the city level. Our parks are utilized by our entire community, and we're looking at this holistically as a community. When we did this loss for a six-year term, last year around, I was on council, made the motion for the benefit of our entire community. I am encouraged and optimistic again that our partners will meet us at the table when we present our list of our needs for our entire community, not just city residents. Council, the conversation will continue on a five-year versus a six-year. I'm going to be optimistic and hope that the county will entertain the idea of a six-year, and that the county will entertain negotiations on behalf of all county residents, those that also reside inside the city. Anything further, Mr. Mayor? Next item. GDOT, Highway 53.
All right. We get to talk about something we have no control over. This is always one of those that when you get something in the mail, you kind of, you open it quickly because you're so, so excited. This particular letter is really just a courtesy. GDOT, as you know, have been in the process of finalizing their rights of way, so in their plan, planned development process of any road project, state road project, GDOT will go through preliminary engineering, roadway, and then construction. So when you get letters like this, they're not thinking we're the city, we're just a stakeholder. So what they do is, you'll see in the packet, I think this story printed this along with some of the blank forms, they're just seeking their feedback based upon the exhibits. So we're going to kind of scroll through this a little bit. This one's very, very specific. This is not the plan set for the 53 project. This is essentially a few exhibits of how do you even get started on the road project, my assumption. Because they started here. This is the old high school. This is the Methodist church. This is Appalachian Trail, Lawson. So if you recall, the idea behind GDOT doing the state route project is up until 515, up until about this area before the old high school, it would spur off. This would be one-way coming out of town, two-lane, one-way, and it would spur off two-way, or one-way, two streets into here to then cut through to Spring, and Spring, where Perot Park is, that would be a signalized, and on through to the roundabout at Walgreens. So we'll look at the next slide to look at, this is what we got. So a lot of what I just said, I'm just assuming, because this is what we got, you got your packet. They said, hey, give us your comments, give us your questions. There's really no comments or questions, it's reality. This is their road, this is their project. I don't know if they have programming, you know, covered for with the project, but let's just assume they have. The idea is this is how they're going to do it. So the blown-up version, next side, next slide is then, this is where they would essentially say, we're going to start here and probably close this off, the Appalachian. We're going to keep this going for traffic because they want to be mindful of any business that's here, along with keeping Holly Street. So the next slide would then illustrate, here's the old high school. So again, presumably, this is me giving their presentation to y'all, so please pardon me. This is where it would spur off. So again, how do you start a project? Well, you just have to start, and this is kind of how they start. And then this section would have to be closed for them to then bring in to a traffic. So the next slide is just a blown-up version of that. And the next slide is, again, you get this built, how do you go, circulate, close? Because as you can tell, the idea is you'll come down 80 Lawson, hit this, and hit this roadway all the way through. Now, the reason I'm bringing this up is a little bit of just, you know, city manager, elected, city staff, oftentimes we're supposed to know everything, and we do not. We have a great relationship with GDOT, but if there is a resident or business that receives something very similar, they may be struggling the way that I would be struggling trying to discern what it is. So if they were to see this video, they can at least say, okay, well, I'm not alone. They're just giving us kind of a heads up, this is what we're going to do. If you've got any comments, special requests, special accommodations, public safety to be aware, there's no timing associated with this. There's nothing that I can tell you other than this is a step that they do in their process, once they're getting ready to go from right-of-way to construction. So, and the next one is just a blow-up version. Yep, so that was it. So the next one, any questions on?
GDOT.
GDOT.
I mean, just, I mean, you said you don't really know, will they pick up the phone and say, hey, next week, we're going to start moving earth or do this, or is there any kind of legal?
So, Kim, go ahead.
I was going to say, if I can tackle that one. So, you know, they are still working on some private way acquisition and finalizing that. They're also in the process of working with all of the utilities that are in the area too. You know, we've done our markups, we've submitted our utility aid requests, those are all being worked out as well. We will get significant notice before they start. So they won't call and just say, hey, we've got a contractor. They've got to go out to bid too. They've got things that they will have to do in order to progress.
The 16-month period that they discussed in the letter is just a segment of the project, right?
Yes, closure may last six to 12 months.
Yes. To re-figure that area.
So one section could take up two years. Deputy City Manager discussed the moving of infrastructure. We did put in a utility aid request. We have asked for 100% utility aid on that request.
Yes.
Council, that is another item to keep in mind. If we get anything less than 100%, we need to pick up the tab and identify the funding somewhere.
So, Mayor, thank you for that, Coach. I will tell you, there was, in Acworth, that's where I was at for 15 years, but there was a state Route 92, and I think very similar to the way our community talks about the 53 project, the big project, they ain't never going to have it, never going to have it. There were so many things said way back 20, 30 years ago about State Route 92. Well, guess what? It did happen. And there was an electrical component, a power component to Acworth, Acworth Power, municipal power. And unfortunately, you know, we're hoping we got the golden touch with ours because we didn't in Acworth. And so as a utility, they don't differentiate between, oh, you're a city, you have limited resources, no, you're a utility, you're a business. It is a business enterprise. So you move your utilities when I do my road project. They gave no money to Acworth Power. So all of the millions was borne on that utility, i.e. Acworth Power. So to Mayor's point, to Kim's point, a little bit of, you know, tentative apprehension is, okay, well, we are a utility, it is a business. GDOT, again, does not differentiate between saying, oh, well, hey, we know blah, 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 the history, they do not care. We're doing a road project, we've programmed our money, you have to move it. And I think this is estimated at?
I believe it's just under $6 million.
So.
Just for the utilities?
Yes, for our relocations.
So, good point, Mayor, that's something.
We have not budgeted for. We hope to not anticipate. That utility aid request is sitting with the state. I am optimistic that everyone hears that.
100%.
So they are waiting on one additional piece of information from us. They require three years of audited results. We've only been able to provide them 23 and 22 because 24 is not available yet. And so they understand that. After the meeting on the second, I believe, we will be able to provide them that last piece that they're missing, and then hopefully they will consider and approve our request.
Thank you.
Six million, you said, Kim?
It's about, yeah, I mean.
Give or take.
Off the top of my head, it is right around 6 million.
So if we get that, maybe we only did about 71 million.
I took that out of my estimate.
Damn it.
Next item on that.
So under roads, and I apologize, so on your agenda, you will see a component of stormwater. I wanted to own the fact that in light of a lot of other distractions, other things, you know, y'all have given us guidance to move forward with some Stiegall, Mary, Squaw Valley to solicit RFP. We've just not been able to craft the RFP to solicit, so just wanted to give you all that date to let you know it hasn't been forgotten. Obviously, under the heading of roads, what, a lot of this is just kind of update, city manager's office update. No one's going to recall, but I'm going to say it. You may recall, in the late summer of 2019, there had been development, townhome development behind the hospital. Mr. Neil Hughes, Gary Copeland was developing some townhomes. I think there had been an expectation of the city taking over the roads. As such, I think that preliminary is, yeah, you haven't really finalized, but sure. So last week, I received a letter or an email from Mr. Hughes, the other developer with Mr. Copeland, who said, attached is the letter of map revision approval from FEMA for the 72 lots along with the recorded plat. We put the final cap on the streets, please let me know what you need for the street dedication. So I'd spoke with Mr. Hughes, advised him that the team was going out to look at it. I said it was not our intent to try to, you know, do anything more than, hey, we're going to commit to take these streets over. There may be a few punch list items that we're going to coordinate with. I told him we will put this on the June 2 meeting in hopes that, you know, hey, here's some streets we're going to program in. This is just the copy of the recorded final plat illustrating the roads along with the homes. So again, our residents, our roads, you'll just see an agenda item, June 2 for that. And the next image is just kind of a street view of what it looks like. So kind of part of the additional update of roads, I know there's been a lot of questions about Shelby Lane.
If I can, if you can go back two slides. These plans will be presented in the next council meeting also?
I had not anticipated, I put it in the packet, but not presented.
Perfect, thank you. Continue.
Yes. So Shelby Lane, wanted to show y'all, this is the actual permit, and you can see it's the driveway permit for Shelby Lane because you'll recall, 108 is a state route. So in order for anyone to encroach upon a state route, there has to be a permit offered by one state entity to a local government entity. So there's always been an excitement, expectation, hope for this cut-through. There's no denying the fact that it would be a great reliever to 515. I think this permit then segues into the plans that had been submitted for that permit was for the turn lane, and you can go to the next slide, that has been completed, so 108 traveling towards 515. The turn lane in accordance with the plans, the next slide then shows the plans that shows the turn lane off of 108, turning left on to Shelby. The next slide shows that that median had been built in accordance with the plans that they had submitted to GDOT with the turn. And I think the next slide illustrates that part of the question is, well, there are no plans that we have for the road. So those plans that were illustrated, associated with that permit, were such that you can see the completion. What we're looking at is similar to other plans that we received, say, hey, here's a road, it's plotted, it's done, you want to dedicate that to the city. We don't have that in our records.
If I can, Mr. Mayor, can you go back to the letter that you were shown? The header is Regulations for Driveway and Encroachment Control Manual. That was dated in 2020, and if you can go forward a few slides. So on that image there, the dark asphalt area including the turn lane is all of that encroachment control area. That is it. That is the plan for the encroachment on a state highway with the local governing body.
Yes.
That is all that cover. It stops where the pavement in that image ends. Thank you.
So what we're looking at is, the reason we do things is, you know, as some other things will illustrate is, you know, if there is a design that's appropriate in terms of no adverse effect to motorists, pedestrians, other bodies of water, other properties. So the idea is, this is needed that goes along with like the packet of information to where you would officially accept, that then if someone came back and said, hey, I'm having some flooding on my property after you've taken dirt and turned it into pervious, you know, and you say, well, here's the engineer that says, no, there was no additional downstream impact when you put this pervious surface on him.
If I can, Mr. Mayor, the property circled in red is private property?
Yes.
That is not city-owned?
Yes.
And there are no plans presented to the city at this time for what is circled in red for a roadway?
None of the worth. The information I've received and that I think we only had was what I've already illustrated.
For the connection, the connection only.
Yes. But once again, I want to give you all this update because I don't think that, you know, I want to underscore the fact that this is such a tremendous opportunity for us to utilize in our system of roadways, and I think I want to stand here and champion the fact that it is supported, it is just something that we just need kind of the additional information afforded to us, and I think we can kind of bring some finality to it. That's it.
Thank you, sir. Anything further under that item, Stormwater Road Projects? Mr. Lucas?
Do not face.
Mr. Lucas?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Moving on to the amended item, which is Mayor Comments on Parks. Council, recently, we were contacted by local residents in reference to a grant opportunity, and it was in reference to our tennis courts over at City Park. And the idea is to apply for funding for a grant in order to refurbish them and repurpose into pickleball courts. My request of staff was to send that over to the Parks Committee, and we have one Parks Committee member present, so I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Grant.
Yeah, so we just have an opportunity, and we've got to go because with June 2.
There is a deadline.
There is a deadline. It's a $50,000 grant to help build pickleball courts, and so it would be a dedicated space going from tennis to pickleball. But I think it's an opportunity, a way for us to continue moving on, investing in our parks. I support this work, so figure we bring it out today to have a discussion on the rest of council, see where your heads are, and if you like information.
In addition to that, Council, the new LED lighting has been installed at the courts. They are operational, they are working. Improvements in our parks continue. Mr. Davis and his crew have been out there working. We just did the ribbon cutting. And if you recall, we had a town hall on this park and this property, and we had pickleball individuals in attendance from this group, and so they have actively identified a funding source. This is why this is a special call and work session meeting. I'm going to ask Council to authorize me to sign off on the application for this grant. I'll give the floor for a motion.
No, to, I'd like to make a motion to submit the application for the grant for the pickleball.
Thank you, sir.
Second.
Any discussion, Council? All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, same? Thank you, Council. Look forward to that paperwork. Look forward to that paperwork. Next item on the agenda is executive session. I'm taking a motion to enter executive session for the reason of legal.
So moved.
Motion second. In discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Ose.
Yes, it is.